Seven o'clock and all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming today. Can I have approval of the minutes for the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two ordinance subcommittee meeting? I need a motion for the ordinance subcommittee meeting. Thank you, Trish. I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Fred Stanek. Discussion. All in favor? Oppose?
Abstain.
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 One, two, three. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes and three abstentions. No nays. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the February first, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Pat Lombardi. Discussion?
Yes, if I may?
Absolutely.
Page seven. I would like to offer a correction. Page seven of the minutes, under Selectmen's Public Comment, under my comment. Page two, or line two, in the middle, it states a deficit reduction year. It should, I believe, read plan for the year.
In that first bullet, right Fred?
In the first bullet, under my name, line two, in the middle, where it states year, I believe that should read plan.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yep. Okay. You got that? Alright, thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Notice, note, Mr. Stanek's change. All in favor?
I'm in favor as corrected.
As corrected.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Chris Bowen abstention, Bob Finley abstention, Al Bruno abstains, Pat Lombardi accepts, Trisha accepts, Cher accepts.
That was a motion by, uh, Mr. Stanek.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Stanek.
Sorry to be picky.
No, I'm not being picky.
It's a big one.
Gotta get it right, right?
Dot the i's and cross the t's.
Close the q, loop. Discussion, and item number five, discussion and take possible action regarding the updated Cabanta agreement in your packet. Is a resolution from Town Attorney authorizing the town of Seymour's first select woman, that's me, to enter into the restated intercommunity agreement regarding the B-B-R-R-F-O-C. Did you all have a chance to look at it? Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Well, actually, I wanted to have a motion to entertain a motion to accept the Cabanta agreement as written, or do I need to read it into the?
A motion to approve the resolution as written.
Yes.
Which would authorize you to execute the Cabanta agreement, the, uh, not actually the Cabanta agreement, but execute the, um, intercommunity agreement between the cities of the boroughs of Rowland, Grantsbridge, Ridgefield, Rowland, and Harton, New York, with the claim of no permit prospect Seymour, Suddington, Warren, Washington, and Wood.
As written. Moved by Al Bruno?
Second.
Second by Bob Finley. Discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
So this is, um, we've been in this agreement, it seems like, since nineteen eighty-five?
Mm-hmm.
And this is just updating, from what I understand, this is just updating the agreement for the B-R-R-F-O-C and the MSW and recycling agreements, correct?
Yeah, you're, you're not re-executing the MSW and recycling agreement because you are executing the intercommunity agreement, which is restated, and the intercommunity agreement basically sets out the, um, fiscal resource recovery facility, operating committees.
Mm-hmm.
And that is comprised of all of the municipalities that were the original participants in the management of this place.
Thank you for the clarification.
It was, it was a.
Thirteen communities have a proposal.
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Discussion and take possible action regarding the establishment of awards conferred by the Board of Selectmen. I will turn this over to Mr., I mean Attorney Selectmen, Fred Stanek. How's that? All those titles, Fred?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, Chris, for pointing that out to me.
I mentioned at the last meeting that I was going to propose the establishment by this board of two different awards. Modeled after what the Board of Education has created over the years. The Board of Education has four awards that are awarded annually to individuals in the community. The David Brummer Award, the Excellence in, David Brummer Excellence in Education Award, the Tom Patruchini Environmental Award, the John J. Gallagher Memorial Athletic Award, which Mr. Bruno received one year, and the Tina Kabeza Excellence in Teaching Award. I thought that this board might model after those awards and thought about creating two different awards, a governmental service award, a community service award. And I gave you proposals. Um, I put down, I included some criteria. You could, we can add to it, take away from it. I left it somewhat general, but that's up to the board members, if you want to entertain this. I would propose that we confer the award sometime in the spring, perhaps May. It would be a plaque. We could go through solicit nominations. Perhaps in March and April, we consider who we want to grant the award to, the awards to, and then confer them at a meeting in May. We can name the awards after an individual, each award after an individual, or just call Board of Select persons a award, committee service, governmental award. So I don't know what the thoughts are.
I don't have a copy of the, um, criteria.
Yep.
No, I was just looking for that.
I have a hard copy. Give me a minute.
Wasn't in the packet?
Nope. The thing I have on here is a sports book. Steven, can you run and make, um, some samples of it?
Yep.
What could I do?
Are you printing it? Alright? Steven has, Steven filed it, sir.
Okay.
Steven filed it, so I'm printing it.
I support, just to be clear, I do support it. I just, you mentioned that you had drafted some criteria and that I did not have in front of me.
Right, that's what I'm asking for.
That'd be great. It's a good idea.
I do have a copy of each, if anybody wants to talk while we're waiting.
I have a lot of patients. My last meeting got over a ten-year-old last night.
So theoretically speaking, they must be all four of these things?
Yes, that would be criteria. Again, we can play with it.
Right, right. I think my only concern would be, is this, is this something that the Board of, that the Board of Selectmen needs to take on?
No. No, it's discretionary.
I didn't, but I.
Oh, right. And no, I, what I'm just, I guess, um, I don't know, I mean, I just saw it on the agenda this morning, so I'm still trying to.
As I said, the Board of Education has four awards that we confer each June.
Right.
That we develop over the years in honor or memory of individuals who were involved in the educational district.
Anything, you know what? Anything that gets more people noticed, it gives a brass ring for, to get more people involved.
I have a copy. Thank you. But that's the point, you know? Draw people into the process, acknowledge and recognize people.
Make it circular. Okay. Thank you, Steven.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenk. We now have the proposed to establish two awards to be conferred by the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis. The Excellence in Governmental Service Award will be awarded, shall be given to, an individual who is or was a resident of the town of Seymour. An individual who has served as a government official, board member, or commission member, or government employee for the town of Seymour, the state of Connecticut, or the federal government. Three, an individual who has assisted the people at town of Seymour in a governmental role in an outstanding or exemplary manner. And four, an individual who shares the ideals of blank, who valued helping people through government service. And that is the Excellence in Governmental Service Award. I don't mean to read to you, but we have somebody from the paper, so I just figured it'd be easier to. Okay? The second one is a proposed award for the Outstanding Community Service Award. The criteria of this election is, the award shall be given to an individual who is or was a resident of the town of Seymour. An individual who has contributed to the well-being of the people of the town of Seymour through outstanding or exemplary community service. An individual who shares the ideals of blank, who valued working towards creating a better community for all. The Board would solicit nominate nominations from the public beginning each year in March, decide on the recipient of the award during the month of April, and confer the awards at a meeting of the Board of Select Persons during the month of May.
And number four, with regard to proposal one, number three, with regard to proposal two, we would, if we named the awards in honor of somebody, then we would include his or her name.
It's a good idea.
What would be the, what would be the process for adopting this? Would this need to go through the ordinance subcommittee, or?
No, it's not an ordinance.
Not an ordinance.
We could adopt it if we're so inclined to do so.
So it wouldn't have to go to a subcommittee or anything?
We don't have to adopt this tonight, that's for sure. And if the majority doesn't, does not want to proceed, that's okay too. I just, it's really, it's really nice what the Board of Education does.
It is.
People like Al.
I was honored to get that. Yeah, that's cool.
Did you have anybody in mind, Attorney Stanek?
No.
You've just seen the success that the Board of Ed has had.
Right.
And you feel the Board of Select, Selectmen should do the same thing too.
Does the, so the Board of Ed solicits nominations from the public?
Yes.
Can they get them?
Yes. Not a lot, but they get them. Okay. The Board of Ed set up an awards advisory committee. It made it more complicated, okay? We could do something like that if you wanted to.
Instead of having seven, you could have, I think we talk about it and then bring it to the Board for a vote. And not in public, so it'd be a surprise. Fred, is that how they do it? Like, they do it like as a subcommittee?
Well, it's, it's a committee, it's an advisory committee, so the FOI law, FOI is, attaches to it, so it is in public, but the public doesn't generally go to that meeting.
Right, right. Okay. I was gonna say, you kind of wanted me to.
We could have an ad hoc, three-member committee to accept the nominations, go through them, and then.
Oh, kind of vetted out just in case there's a lot for us to check them out?
So what would be the process for soliciting nominations from the public? How does the Board of Education, the mechanics of it?
The Board of Education posts it on the website, puts an article in Voices, Bella Independent Sentinel, um, gets, has handouts at the library, hard copies at the library of the solicitation, and then in the schools.
All, all good places to solicit names from, all good places to get information from. I mean, the Board of Ed could even put something here in Town Hall for that as well.
Absolutely.
We could extend that, even beyond that, and make sure we cast a net to get a handful of nominations every year.
Absolutely.
I'm a little bit at a, I'm just at a standstill on if we want to name it after anybody at this time. We might want to develop the rewards and the awards, and then maybe, maybe something will come to us as we, I don't know.
I think that, I think that award committee would have to discuss that and then bring it back to the Board, potentially.
I mean, I could think of some people from the past, you know, who we might name the awards after. I, actually, I can come up with some names.
I think it has a little more power to it when you name it after an individual.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, I'm, I'm, not that I'm, getting put on the spot is a bit dramatic to say, but I just don't have anything.
I'm not saying that we'd even decide this today.
I'd want to think about that.
I mean, we could confer the award in the fall, you know?
Right. Could we change the name of the person with, who, how, you know, so let's look at, um, number one, right, which is the Excellent in Governmental Service Award.
Right.
Four, could one year be, who shares the ideals of Norma Drama, right? What her ideals were. Right?
I was thinking Al Presti. I don't know enough about her history.
I thought her as well, that she was.
Was she already on an award? I thought we were trying to recognize somebody different.
I thought she was on.
I mean, that's all, that's all things we have to look at, right?
But could you change it the following year?
Go ahead.
We've got a lot of things that are already named after some eminent people who have been through our town, uh, and Al Presti, um, various other people. If we're gonna name the awards after people, I suggest that maybe we consider somebody a little bit more recent. Possibly someone who is still around to ignore, to receive the acknowledgement and the respect that that entails.
Oh, I didn't think of it that way, but okay.
Um, because it's.
Who are you thinking of?
I'm sorry?
Who are you thinking of?
I'm not thinking anybody in particular. I'm thinking on these awards, maybe somebody who's, you know, because we've got the Paul Pollock fish bypass, but Mr. Pollock has been gone for some time.
Yes.
And it's very good to acknowledge our history, but we have more recent history too. And I've always felt that we should acknowledge the people that we love and respect while they're here to hear it. So I think that's something to consider as well.
Great point.
Yep. But this is the genesis of an excellent idea that I think can possibly bring more people into town service and town government, et cetera.
Absolutely.
I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve Fred's, um, proposal to establish these awards and to have the details fleshed out. And we might not be able to do it this year, or maybe for future years, but I'd like to make a motion to approve it i- i- in this draft form, and then sift out the details later on, inform that committee, et cetera. But I think it's a great idea.
One second. Motion by Al, second by Trish. Discussion?
Perhaps this could be referred to three of us, either an ad hoc committee or the ordinance committee. There's no reason to.
I don't want to put it into the ordinance committee. We'll, we'll do an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
How's that?
Right.
Not on the ordinance committee.
Yeah, just from a discussion, just whatever we do, we have to make it repeatable as things change.
Absolutely.
Or change, so whatever we do, we're gonna make it something that sticks. Yeah.
And that's the way it is with the Board of Education. The Brummer Award was established in the year two thousand in memory of David Brummer, who had been chairman of the Board of Education prior, up until his death in nineteen ninety-eight. And then we did the Gallagher Award in memory of John Gallagher, who was the number one fan of Seymour Athletics, lived to be a hundred years old. Tom Patruchini, former superintendent, was a vivid fisherman and environmentalist. That award is conferred to a middle school student. That's the only one that goes to a student who is involved in environmental activities. And the Tina Kabeza Award in honor and memory of Tina Kabeza, former teacher and Board of Education member, who, who, it goes to a teacher or a retired teacher. The Brummer Award is community-wide. The Gallagher Award is community-wide. The Patruchini and Tina Kabeza Awards are a little bit more narrow in terms of the qual, the criteria. And this will, these awards will continue forever. Until they're repealed.
We just have to make sure it's repeatable, whereas we have to make sure whoever sits in, in our seats continue this on.
That's what I mean. You have to.
That's why you have that ad hoc committee though, right Fred? That's why you have the ad hoc committee, and if all those members aren't on the Board of Selectmen anymore, you gotta make sure those are filled. You have to, you have to make it another committee to appoint people.
That's, yeah.
Right? That's the way to really secure it.
Really would be any, just like any other committee, that as people turn over, we replace them with new people.
Sure.
But it would be a formal committee though.
It'd have to be a formal committee.
Right.
Where is a formal committee five? Three, okay.
I think we could do three, right, Ruth? Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So it would be, it would be a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. Yep. Subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, and we'll just put it in our committees.
Just call it an awards committee. Awards committee. You know, what we do, what we've done at the Board of Ed is, it's a plaque, and we have a meeting in June where we recognize the top ten students, or the Board recognizes the top ten students, the Teacher of the Year, the retirees, retirees, and other people. And these awards are conferred, and they're plaques, no monetary award with it, you know? The people seem to appreciate it.
It's a nice gesture.
I have a, just a small logistical question. Where does the money for the plaques come from?
Out of the budget.
Would we just add a separate line in the budget for that?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
It's probably not gonna be more than a hundred dollars.
No, we could probably put it in, yeah.
Yeah, it's, as far as a town budget goes, it's chump change, but it's still something to consider logistics of.
Yep. It would, it'd probably come out of one of the line items.
Yeah, I'm thinking we probably have a line item we could use already rather than creating one for.
Yeah.
I mean, in the scheme of things like you said, for such a drop in the bucket, it's not a grandiose gesture more than it's a heartfelt one.
Agreed, and definitely worth the.
I said we could possibly take it out of here a cow.
It's gonna be found under Anne Ray's car. Matt, the mat near driver's seat, right? But anyway, Fred, all seriousness.
Levity, just the levity.
I envision that second Outstanding Community Service Award to go to any individual in the town. I feel that number, just in my mind, the first one, the governmental service, is probably more an adult, but the, uh, the Outstanding Community Service Award could be at anybody, could be any age.
Eagle Scouts.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of young kids that do a lot of work in our town, so that could be a, a young person, not an adult, so I think we're covering some bases there. I mean, it's a great idea.
It is. Alright. That's great. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome, Selectman Stanek. Yep. We'll put, add to the, can I have a motion to add to the agenda to put together an ad hoc, an ad hoc, a subcommittee for the awards committee? To make a subcommittee of the awards committee of the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Motion by Bob Finley, second by Chris Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, I didn't do discussion, sorry. Discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
I thank you for not getting my name confused with Al's again.
I did not.
I thank you for not doing that.
Um, I also like to add to the agenda, the tax, to add to the tax incentive committee discussion, approval of the minutes. That I don't have.
What day was that, last week?
Yeah.
What date was the tax incentive committee lesson?
Last Tuesday. We don't have the minutes, but Trish can talk about it.
Are they, were they filed?
They're not filed yet.
Okay, so we won't, we won't do that yet? Shouldn't they have been filed already?
Seven days.
Okay.
So I take that as likely.
Can we put that on to the March first minutes, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take your second right off. Alright, the ad hoc, I don't want to call it an ad hoc committee, the awards committee, subcommittee.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be a subcommittee, right?
The awards committee, subcommittee members, we're going to put three members on the committee. I think it is right that we just put Mr. Stanek on it as he's the founder of that committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Chair votes aye. Please note, Selectman Stanek's abstention. One more member I would like to nominate, Trish Denka. I know. Oh, I know. I know. They're coming. And Al Bruno. Okay?
Yep.
So you're doing them together?
Yeah.
So moved.
Bruno would not let me.
He just wanted to be mentioned for me, I guess.
Trish Denka and Al Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion? No, discussion. Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Number seven, Selectwoman's report. Oh, it's a long one. You ready?
Yeah.
I didn't need to sigh. Mask requirements for all town buildings have, was lifted yesterday, Monday, February fourteenth. What a wonderful Valentine's Day present that was for everybody. The buildings include Town Hall, Citizens Fire Department, Great Hill Hose Fire Department, Seymour Library, Public Works Garage, Seymour Police Department, Community Seven, uh, Community Center, and Ninety-Eight Bank Street. The schools, Chaffey, La Presti, Bungee, Middle School, and the High School fall under discretion of the Board of Ed. It is up to the Board of Ed, per the governor, to make that decision. I nor anyone in my office has the authority to put in place the no mask requirement, parent choice, or put in place a mask mandate, or step over the Board of Ed's decision in this matter. The governor was very clear when he went, issued his EOs, went into place, it was a superintendent's decision and not elected officials. I just want to make that clear because my office has received a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and a lot of instant messages regarding this. We will gladly listen to the residents, but we cannot intervene on that. I just want to make sure that is clear. Okay? Congratulations to the students who were honored at the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting. If I butcher their name, I am sorry. Michaela Zedeck and her teammates earned a third-place trophy in the Varsity Alpha Division. Additionally, Michaela earned a first-place trophy as the best overall individual speaker in the Varsity Alpha Division. This is their debate team. By winning the third place, the team award and first-place speaker award, Michaela double-qualified for the CDA State Tournament in the spring. Congratulations to Michaela on her accomplishments. The middle school debate team did a debate, uh, December sixth, remember? They did it at the Christmas parade, for those that were there, about the Grinch that stole Christmas. The team was honored at the Board of Education at their meeting this past week. Thank you, Arianna. Thank you, Arianna Johnson, Alyssa Varagi, Ariel Zedak, Anu Asha, Jacob Costello, and of course, Mr. Harvey Catlin. The Lions Club sponsored their annual piece poster concert with the theme "We Are All Connected." You all have a copy of it. Congratulations to our students and GRAS Prize winner Peyton Tilke, uh, she was the first-place winner. Elena Farmer, second place, Kira Guilford, third place, Isabel Quinto. Copies of these posters up in Town Hall, so our residents can see the talented young residents we have. And thank you, Mr. Amanda Dingell, the visual art teacher at the middle school, for sending us copies of the posters. We took all the posters, and if you're going up the stairs at Town Hall, you can see their artwork. It's pretty outstanding. Two of our Seymour residents wrestled in the NBL Championship over the weekend. They are two, they are a two-man team that travels and trains with the Strafford High School. Britt Calver, a freshman, placed fourth in the hundred-and-twenty-pound division. And senior AJ DiTucci won the NBL Championship at a hundred-and-eighty-two. They'll compete this weekend in the Class S Championship. Um, I had the honor of attending the Seymour High School Boys Football Banquet. Congratulations to MVP player Jamar Rumble, Class S All-State Offensive Selection Robert Bernard, Kayden Drezzek, and Sean Foster. Robert Bernard will play football at Southern Connecticut State University in the fall for twenty-twenty-two, he's assigned while at school. In the CIAC Indoor Track Class S Championship this past Saturday, Katie Bruno placed fourth.
Fifty-five?
Yeah. In the fifty-five meter dash and the three-hundred meter dash. Jason Olet placed third in the pole vault with a personal record jump of twelve feet. Katie and Jason have qualified in their events to complete in the state opening championship taking place this Saturday at noon. Congratulations to Bruno.
Thank you.
April thirtieth at five PM is the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame banquet, the Villa Bianca. I've reserved one table so far. Please let me know if you're interested in attending and sitting at the select person's table. I think it's great we all go as a community, um, as, as, as a team and show support. April thirtieth, five o'clock is when appetizers start. Friday, I attended the Seymour High School Drama Club production of Something Is Going Wrong in Oz. The performance and production was exceptional by these students. It left me thinking about the message in that play, it was a job well done. It's important to me to recognize all residents, no matter what their achievements are. It costs nothing to tell someone how proud you are of them, or to recognize what they've accomplished. It goes a long way and puts a smile on someone's face, and that's why I'm always about recognizing, no matter how minor it is, or how major it is. We need to recognize our, our students, we need to recognize our adults. The budgets? As you know, the budget process has started, the following boards have presented their budgets already, the Board of Ed, Police, Public Works, Parks, Town Building, Town Information, Seymour Events, Library, Tax Collector, and the Town Clerk. Tomorrow, February sixteenth, the Fire Department, Fire Marshal, Communications slash Emergency Management, and the Recreation Department will present their budget to the Board of Finance here in the, in the room, starting at seven o'clock. I will present the town's budget on March seventh. So what's happening around town? There's a lot going around town. Husatonic House is a new restaurant that is having a soft opening in April, as soon as I have the date, I will let everybody know. This is on Route thirty-four where the old lake house was, this is a full-service restaurant that has been completely remodeled. Um, again, we'll let everybody know when the ribbon cutting is and the soft opening will be. Luxury apartments are going in across from that restaurant next to the Walsh Cottage. I believe that it's approximately thirty-four apartments, um, the public hearing will be in March. Roller cover in the Commerce Park finished a frame and cover for their warehouse addition. Uh, they also purchased some land up there too, right Rory? Lot of land. Um, an application went through the inland wetland for one-oh-nine River Road, that is the old Husatonic Wire Company for storage units. The size is approximately ninety-nine thousand square foot, and the application states it will be four stories high. There will be a public hearing on this in April. Train Station Pizza on Main Street will open in March, they have more than pizza. This is a building, this is in the building the fire was in. Um, the whole building is back in line with ten units above, as well as the Albanian Social Club is now open. Sabo Auto Body is expanding its businesses and building. The building modification will make it a nicer, up-to-date-looking building, right on Derby Avenue. I've been getting a lot of questions of what's happening on the Regional Water Authority property on Maple and Silver Mine. They are performing a selective harvesting of their property. They're removing trees that are not native to our area and will be in, as well as thinning out the area to make it a secession forest. They applied for and filed all the necessary paperwork to all authorities. They are not clearing the area for development of any sort, there is no Super Walmart going in there, or a Trader's Joe's.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. They have an arborist and an environmental person on staff to watch over this. The Board of Ed Relocation Committee is meeting this Thursday. Uh, my office will be sending a letter to Nogatuck Valley Health to meet in regards to their lease. October tenth, the Great Hill Hose Company will be hosting a block party in celebration of their seventy-fifty anniversary. They are looking for food truck vendors, the contact information is up on our Facebook page. On Thursday the seventeenth, I will be on the Valley Independent with Eugene Disco. We will be doing a podcast on the Seymour's budget. We will not be going over the budget, we will be going over the budget process from start to finish, and how does it start? You know, where does it start? It starts at the department, and then taking it step by step after that. I feel it's important for everybody in town to understand, whether you're new in town or been here for hundreds of years, it's important to know the process and the reason why you should go out to, to vote. There are currently nine single-family houses being built in town. Leyton Ridge, over by Smith Street, has started a construction of ninety units, it's an affordable housing complex. And last but not least, February fifteenth is International Childhood Cancer Day. It's a day of hope, a day that is very close to my heart. We don't celebrate, we become aware, we donate, and we participate in a good cause for our children. And that is it, under Selectwoman's conference. Any questions?
Can, um, can you have Stephen or send out the dates of all those things, we could put them in our calendars to attend? Take a little heads up?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
All of the Selectmen should have a calendar invite for the banquet.
Okay.
Okay. As soon as we get soft opening dates and ribbon cuttings, Stephen will send those out as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, number eight, appointments. Leon Slope, Planning and Zoning, alternate, he's a reappointment, two years, expires two fifteen, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Al Bruno, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, seven, zero. Chris Bowen, Conservation Commission, it's an appointment, two years, two fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. Motion by Trish Denka, second by Al Bruno, discussion. All in favor?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, no, Chris Bowen's abstention. Motion carries, six, zero, one. Thank you. Item nine, number nine, tax refunds and abatements. Please look over.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Seconded by Al Bruno, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, seven, zero. There are no transfers, thank God. Correspondences? No correspondence. Public comment. Going once? Going twice? Public comment going the third and final time. No public comment. Selectman's public comment, Chris Bowen, we always start with you, now I'm gonna start with Mr. Lombardi.
I'm good, madam, first Selectwoman, thank you.
Okay. Bob Finley?
No comment.
Trish Denka?
No comment.
Al Bruno?
I'm looking forward to attending the events we discussed tonight, uh, if at all possible. I'm gonna get those dates, we'll lock those in, looking forward to that, get out there in the community.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Selectman Stanek?
If I may, just follow up with regard to the high school performance of the other side of Oz. I was there Saturday evening, I thought it was outstanding production. Students were great. Uh, it was a wonderful and interesting extrapolation of the nature of Oz. Very nice, nicely done. I think that's all I have to say this evening, thank you.
Chris Bowen?
Little League signups have started for the George J. Hummel Little League. If your child wants to play baseball, we have a lot of wonderful coaches who are willing to work with your child to get them going, from T-ball to coach pitch, all the way up through majors, and come summertime, the seniors division. If you wanna sign up, please reach out to somebody within the league, and we will gladly work with you.
Okay. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Bowen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lombardi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.